Take the lead.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. First on the agenda tonight is, if I can get my glasses out, I should know this by heart. Is our call to order and then the invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Matt, would you mind leading us in the pledge tonight?
Pastor.
I would be honored. So tonight, we do have Pastor Juan Humes from the Kingdom Living Ministries to lead us in our invocation, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
God bless everybody this evening, and I hope you had a wonderful Fourth of July. As we come now to seek the Lord and His will, I ask you just to bow your heads, open your hearts, and focus on Him tonight. And if you don't mind, I'd like to have just a moment of silence for the various cities across our nation. There's been 10 mass shootings in our nation over the Fourth of July. And so my heart is heavy for those individuals, those people, those families that have suffered loss and gone through trauma today, this past weekend. So please keep them on your mind, and then let's just bow our heads for a moment. Father, we come thanking You, Lord, for just being so merciful to us, for allowing Your presence to be with us and allow Your favor to be upon us, Father. We ask that You continue to shine and show Your favor upon our leaders, the mayor, the council, all of the supporting staff, Father, our auxiliary facilities here. Lord, we ask the Father, just give them favor. And we know that favor isn't fair, it's just Your favor. And so, Father, show Your kindness, Your mercy, Your grace, Your peace, Your joy, Your love, yes, Your love. Your word says that the love that You show us is long-suffering, is kind, that it envies not, that it doesn't puff itself up, that You give us and provoke us to do good, Lord. And so, Lord, I pray with our cities and all of our leaders in the business field and various parts of our communities, through all the communities of our family, I pray tonight, allow Your Spirit to rise up in us, to stir us, to be more than what we're capable of being on our own, and allow Your Spirit to lead us through a path of righteousness, Father, not just what we think is righteous, but what You believe and what You say is righteous. Help us to be more than what we are, Lord. Help us to be loving and kind and giving, Father, as only You can touch us and lead us and guide us. I ask this now in Your precious Son, Jesus' name. Bless this meeting, Father. I pray let Your peace rest upon it and fill it with Your joy, too, to overflowing. We ask this now, knowing and believing that if we pray, believe, and have no doubt, then what we pray for, it shall be done. So, Father, according to Your words, this thing is done, is done, is done, and the blessings, thank You, Lord, are coming, coming, coming. In Jesus' name we pray. In Jesus' name we pray, in Jesus' mighty and matchless name we pray. Amen. And thank You, Jesus.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Pastor Juan Humes. You always inspire. Thank you. All right. We have the minutes tonight. Since Mr. Powell's not here.
Mayor McFarland, the minutes.
You're filling in for him.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. My bad. Sorry, Matt. Let the roll call show that Lisa's on the phone with us, and all are present except for Mr. Powell. And I would entertain a motion to excuse him if he's upset.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, please excuse Mr. Powell. That's why we have an agenda. All right, next is item C, minutes.
Mayor McFarland, considering the minutes, I would ask to consider approval of the city council regular meeting minutes for June 20th, 2022, and except for the record, the Historic Preservation Commission for November 22nd, 21, the Historic Preservation Commission for May 23rd, 2022, and also, except for the record, the Fire Personnel Retirement Board minutes of March 2nd, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved as presented. Next item is claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the payment of claims for June 15th through the 28th, 2022.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. Next item is our meeting agenda. I do know there's some changes, Larry. You had a couple changes, or a change.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and for those that are following along with the agenda, staff did issue an addendum to the council meeting, the council agenda removing item I-2 last Friday, and tonight, we are asking that the mayor and council remove item I-1. We've had some dialogue with the potential buyer, and they may be interested in additional land, and so we're asking mayor and council to remove that item and give staff the opportunity to have additional dialogue.
Okay. Anybody else have any other changes? All right, then seeing no more changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the noted modifications.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the agenda with the deletion of I-1 and I-2.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the meeting agenda is approved. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone on the council who wants to move any of the consent agenda items? Anything from staff or the public?
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, now the whole meeting's over. No, I'm just kidding. So the next item actually is public comments. I don't have any comment cards up here, but I will allow, if there's anybody here tonight who would like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda or up for a public meeting, which I don't think there are any of those either, so now's your opportunity to talk to the council. Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public comments section, and we'll move past the aye items and move right to the J-1 and J-2. These are our commission and boards, boards and commissions appointments. There were three of us that interviewed these individuals, and this is the recommendation of that group, bringing it forward to the full council for approval. So the first item is J-1, considering approving the appointment of Josh Smith and Wayne Marshall to the Airport Advisory Board with terms to expire on September 8th of 2025, and then also approving a waiver for the residency requirement rule on one of these individuals. He lives in Robson Ranch, but he has a plane at our airport, so is there anybody who has any comments on this? I mean, I just want to, number one, thank these two gentlemen for their service. The Airport Advisory Board is an important board for us, so just, we appreciate their participation and their volunteerism. Any, okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve Joseph Smith and Wayne Marshall.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, congratulations to Joseph and Wayne, and thank you again for your service. Item J-2 is also an appointment, and this is Nicholas Madell to the Community Services Advisory Board with terms to expire on February 1st of 2024, and Darlene Moberly to the Community Services Advisory Board with terms to expire on February 1st of 2025. And again, approving a waiver for the number of committee member rules, meaning living in the city, right? Is that what that is? Or number?
No, number of committees.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay. Yeah, one of these committee members is on another board, so this waiver allows her to serve on both boards. So again, thanking Nicholas and also thanking Darlene for their service and volunteerism. Is there anybody who has any comments on any of these? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the appointment of Nicholas and Darlene as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, great. Again, thank you to all four of these individuals for volunteering for our boards and commissions, and to all of our boards and commissioners. We do appreciate their service. We don't say thank you enough. Next item, we'll move into our ordinances, resolutions, and other matters requiring action by the council. These are item K on your agenda, item K-1. Mr. Rains?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to present this resolution this evening. This is certainly not timed as well as the initial arrival of Lucid, where we had a Penale County Board meeting and a city council meeting concurrently. We've, but, and so, there's already been information obviously released on this particular arrangement because Penale County considered the agreements last week, and so, but we are here this evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, to ask council to approve a resolution entering into a development agreement between Penale County, City of Casa Grande, and Lucid Motors, so it is a three-party agreement, and authorizing the city manager to execute any of the appropriate documents. You'll see in the development agreement that there is a specific provision dealing with the lease, which is the primary focus of this particular development agreement. However, the city is not a party to the lease. It is a agreement between Penale County and Lucid Motors. And so, it's no surprise to anyone that Casa Grande and Penale County are experiencing tremendous community and economic benefit with the arrival of Lucid Motors. Their impact to the community spans from providing quality jobs with good wages and benefits to participating in new technical training programs for the residents and facilitating discussions and contracts with, in contact with new economic development prospects in the form of supply chain companies wanting to locate in the region. Ultimately, these identifiable benefits translate into more successful businesses within the community through the increased income streams into the general economy, and it also builds a stronger social fabric of support within the community, as well as will facilitate additional growth through economic development. Lucid Motors has completed the first phase of their manufacturing plant. They have employed over 2,000 employees. They've commenced production of the Lucid Air and has launched construction of Phase 2. If you've not been out there, it's just impressive what their Phase 2 is including. All of this within the last 18 to 24 months. They, and in doing so, they essentially established a new vision for our fine community and their footprint here in the community. And so, several months ago, they launched a campaign to assemble approximately 1,300 additional acres in the industrial area adjacent to their property, doing so under, as many economic development prospects do, under a code name. And as I mentioned prior, the primary focus of this development agreement and the three-party agreement has to do with a provision that allows, by which the county will purchase the land, and Lucid will lease that back over a four-year term with the option to buy. That's very similar to what they did in Phase 1 in the development agreement of the initial 550 acres. And so, there are two specific provisions within the development agreement that the city is privy to, and if I can, Mr. Mayor, just spend a second on both of those provisions and what we'll be asking the mayor and council to consider this evening. The proposed agreements require the city to consider annexation of the parcels that are currently outside of the city limits, and there is a handful of parcels that are outside of the current city incorporated limits, and to rezone the said properties into the manufacturing and industrial I-2 zoning district, subject to appropriate conditions to ensure compatibility with surrounding properties. Some of these locations, there are residential units that are in what we have identified as our industrial general plan land use, and so essentially, what this provision does is it allows for a pathway, if you will, to actually annex and zone these properties as industrial, with the compatibility issue being considered at the time of the rezoning. The second item on the request in the development agreement ultimately extends a provision in the initial agreement, which was the reservation of 1 million gallons of sewer capacity for an initial term of seven years. This particular agreement takes that initial term from seven to 12 years, and also will allow Lucid, if development occurs that actually results in a demand greater than a million, it allows Lucid the opportunity to ask for an additional 500,000 gallons per day of allocation of reservation, and, but because that could be impactful on our sewer treatment facility, we actually have a provision in the agreement that allows us to evaluate that and ensure that it's available before it would be allocated. The note that I want to make clear to everybody today is that when considering the provision of the agreement, it's important to note that the city is finalizing plans to expand the current treatment capacity at our water reclamation facility from 12 million gallons to approximately 15 million gallons, with construction to commence within the next 12 months. We see that timeline of the vision of Lucid expanding and their supply chain companies potentially arriving to really coincide with the expansions that we're planning as well. And so, from staff's perspective, we felt like this was important to continue to see Lucid grow in the community, continue to have the economic impacts, and as such, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, we are recommending approval of the resolution entering into a development, the three-party development agreement with Penale County, City of Casa Grande, and Lucid Motors, and I would pause and entertain any questions.
Just a comment from me, we'll see those, all of those back here anyway, at some point in time.
See what, Mr. Mayor?
Annexations.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And if I could, I just want to. That's correct.
Yeah.
And just to make clear, I think Mr. Rains said that, you know, we were guaranteeing them I-2 zoning, we're not. Our agreement simply says that we will, as staff, process applications, but this council will make a decision whether annexation is appropriate and what zoning is appropriate. It simply says that we'll process those applications when requested by Lucid, but it does not guarantee them either annexation or rezoning. That remains a legislative matter.
Right, and all that expansion is in our industrial zone, so it's already part of our general plan.
And, Mr. Mayor, to that end, if I can make just one additional point, that it will likely be, the applicant will likely be Penale County at that time, because they will have acquired the land, so it'll be one owner, and obviously, we would be working with Penale County and Lucid as we coordinate the timing of that.
Okay. Matt?
And to be clear with the wastewater, I mean, they're still, so everyone knows they're paying for that, but we're just reserving the capacity, correct? I mean, once they start using it, they'll be.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, they are not paying for the reservation. We are.
No, I mean, when they use it, they'll be.
Oh, that is correct. That is correct.
That's what I mean, the reservation just assures that they'll be able to use that much. We're not giving them free wastewater services.
We are not.
Just want to make that clear.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Lavender.
Mr. Rains, Lucid's been projected to add about 6,000 jobs. Is this increasing that number to higher than 6,000, or is that part of their initial projection?
To my knowledge, the 6,000 number is the projection that they have established at their full build-out. I am not sure that they have provided, well, they have not provided us with another number based on this new vision.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Lisa, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Bob, anybody?
Nope.
Donna? Okay. All right, thank you, Larry. Seeing no further questions, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5438, a resolution of the council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a three-party development agreement between the City of Casa Grande, Lucid USA Inc., and Penale County, authorizing the use and/or expenditure of funds necessary to satisfy the requirements of the development agreement, and authorizing the city manager to execute the development agreement and other documents reasonably necessary for the purposes of implementing the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution 5438 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a couple seconds. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is K-2. Angel, you are up.
Mayor and council, this action is for the consideration of establishing the primary property tax rates for fiscal 2023 at 96.43 cents and secondary property tax rates at rate at 39.93 cents. On June 20th, the mayor and council held a public hearing on the fiscal 23 final budget and the primary and secondary tax levies contained in this action. This action also bears upon the final budget that was approved in the earlier special meeting. Primary property taxes collected are used within the general fund for operational purposes, and secondary property taxes are utilized to pay voter-approved general obligation bond debt. Based upon the current assessed valuations, the proposed primary property tax rate of .9643 cents will raise a tax levy of approximately $4,428,505, and the secondary rate of .3993 will raise a tax levy of approximately $1,833,603. It is the intent of the city that the property tax rates be adopted, and that if any adjustments are required to be made by the county, that they do so in the levy. Revenue associated with the adoption of the primary and secondary property tax rates represent a significant portion of the city's annual operating budget, including payments of debt service on bonded indebtedness.
Okay. So this is required by state statute that we address this separately. It is not a public hearing, but did you want to add to that, Larry?
Mr. Mayor, we held our public hearing at the last council meeting.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions or comments? Matt?
This means the property tax rate's going down, correct? As Lisa brought up earlier. Thank you, Lisa. Just to point that out.
Anybody else? Lisa, any comments?
Oh, no. Just a reminder, it's going down from 1.58 to 1.36.
3.6, yeah.
Yep.
All right, good point. Anybody else? Bob?
Nope.
Okay. Seeing no one else, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3337, an ordinance of the council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the City of Casa Grande, subject to taxation a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from fines, licenses, and other sources of revenue, providing for funds for the various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness, and providing a general fund for general municipal expenses, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2023.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3337 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, that concludes most of tonight's business. The only thing really left is, since we're not going to go into executive session, is our reports. So Lisa, I'm going to start with you since you're on the phone.
Okay, Mayor, and I don't really have a report. I'll wait on something else till I'm there, but, so no reports, just I'm enjoying a little bit of sun in California, so.
All right.
That's it.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes, yes, Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate all five of our council candidates for an outstanding forum. On Thursday night, I thought all five did an excellent job. It was nice to watch a forum that was positive and not mean shots at each other, especially after our governor's debate on Friday night that many people called it version of Saturday Night Live. I also wanted to thank Steve Harzey for his service to our community. I know tonight is his last council meeting. Steve, thank you for all that you've done, and we wish you the best of luck as you move
Donna?
I just, congratulations to FFA, our local, they receive state recognition, and they were busy, even though summer break is here. Also, I wanted to thank the fire department. We had some nice comments about the fire department offering a babysitting class, and while that may seem little to some people, I think that there was 12 folks that graduated from that, and it really is a great service for our youth and community, so I appreciate that. And then, community service always does a great job. I know that many communities did not have fireworks because they were short on fireworks, and obviously, we have a good working relationship, and Steve and his crew made it happen, so I've heard a lot of positive comments to those people that were sending concerns about the fireworks in the neighborhoods. You know, I wish we could do something about it. I know that animals and our aging community is really important to us, and they don't like when the Fourth of July comes around, so, you know, for that, I apologize, but I think that we offered a really good substitute, and I'm hoping that more people will take advantage of that, and that's it.
Good, Donna. Matt?
I wanted to start off with reminding, this Friday is the beer and burgers event in CG Main Street downtown. They said buy your tickets early, so they'll make sure and have enough hamburgers for everybody. It's on their website, Facebook, and Instagram page if you're looking for information. Also want to commend Kevin's department, because the road striping, it seems like a small thing, but it's looking really good, and it makes a big difference, restriping all those roads, so I appreciate you keeping up with that and keeping the plan together. And we're already starting with youth commission this month, because school is starting in like three weeks, so we've got that going, starting, we are planning already, not starting, it's going, so we're excited to get a new year kicked off, and I just have to thank Steve and his. And I just have to thank Steve and his department. When he told us we weren't going to have fireworks, I was very sullen and disappointed, and he came through with the help of the suppliers, and he told me they tracked it from the, the ship to the port, to Phoenix, to Casa Grande, and it was a great show. And, I mean, it was fantastic, and, and all the games and foam and everything down there was just a great community event, and that goes along with our free community events, so it was perfect, and the finale was awesome, Steve, so that's a good send-off for your last, one of your last big events, but we, we appreciate all that you've done. You'll be missed, so thank you very much, and it's great Fourth of July.
Bob?
Mayor, I attended Central Arizona Government's monthly meeting, and, no other way to put this, but our dues got raised. And they, they raised them across the board, and it was pointed out that, that you from Casa Grande had encouraged them to not go strictly by population, and so we actually got a small increase compared to some of them, but our, our annual dues are now 18,000 for CAG. There was also a, a motion or movement to eliminate the management committee, and I guess that is staffed by staff representatives from, from the communities. We came away with it, denying the request to eliminate the committee, but, but we were asked to come back to our jurisdictions and encourage participation, so I'm not sure who our representative is, but.
I think he's in this, in this room.
Oh, okay, well, consider yourself encouraged.
Or delegate.
Yeah, and also, I'm, I'm sad Mr. Powell is not here tonight. I wanted to thank him. He spearheaded a, a group that was well-attended, I think, about 30 of us at Bedellins, last week to discuss water, specifically the project of harvesting Mississippi River floodwater and piping it to Arizona. There was a lot of support among the group. It was a diverse group, but a lot of people thought that was a workable solution. It is becoming apparent, though, in Arizona, there's a group that favors that project and a group that favors desalinization, so I don't know at what point we will be asked to take an official stance, but I, I believe it's coming, so, anyway, I encourage council to remain aware of water challenges. That's all.
All right, thank you, Bob. I just wanted to kind of highlight a little bit on the state's budget since it was approved last week, signed off by the governor, just to kind of make sure everybody's aware, and to Bob's point, there's a billion dollars in water over the next three years that's been set aside in that budget. It's about $334 million a year. There's a billion dollars for infrastructure, and part of that is the $400 million for the I-10 widening, so that is a huge deal for this community, and really for the state of Arizona. There's $425 million in state's rainy day fund that they added to their billion that they already have. There's $60 million in housing trust fund. There's a billion dollars for K through 12 education, which is also a big deal, and $125 billion to pay down the state debt on their pension obligation, so they did something similar to what we did, our PSPRS pension plans. They bought down the debt, which is, which is also a good use of money. So anyway, that's the budget. It's approved, yea. Legislature is out, so they can't hurt us anymore. It's a good day when they, when they signee die, which means they're gone, at least for Just be prepared, though, next year, there will be 33 new legislators. Thirty-three. There's 33 new ones. That scares the hell out of me. Anyway, I did attend the Board of Supervisors, Board Meeting last week, and with the Lucid Property Movement and the, the, they did vote to put the PRTA, which is the Pinalo Regional Transportation Authority, have set sales tax back on the ballot for voters, so that will be on your November 8th ballot to, to approve or not. It is something that the voters have already approved once. Again, it was deemed illegal, an illegal tax by the Supreme Court because we were challenged by the Goldwater Institute, but it will be back on the ballot and you get to decide again. And hopefully, everybody says, oh, never mind. The, I almost blew it. Volunteers, we're, we're going to be doing this MLab test, which is a test where we check, test up, up and down speeds on, on the internet, and so we're going to be looking for volunteers. It's, it's part of my broadband task force that I'm part of, and so Casa Grande has volunteered to put up about 200 homes to test it, so depending on where you're at and where you live, if you want to, if you want to volunteer to have a, it'll be a little box that they put on your system, and they'll monitor it 24/7 for probably about six months. And it, hopefully, there'll also be some good information that comes out of it for, for the homeowner, in that you can actually take a look at when your speeds are maxed and when they're not, and whether you're getting the speeds you're supposed to be getting, based on what your contract is with your supplier. So it'll be an interesting process to see whether they're actually delivering what they say they deliver, and then it also gives us a, a point to look at and say, okay, what do we need to work on? You know, what, as far as a broadband and fast speed internet access is not working? And so, because there are parts that are broken, and so this will help us identify some of those weaknesses. So, anyway, if you're, if you're interested, let me know. This week, or, yeah, this week, we're going to go actually tour the old Casa Grande Mall, so that should be interesting to see, see what kind of shape that is in. I'm going to be touring it with the U-Haul folks since they just purchased it, and we'll, we'll see what we can do with that. Also, meeting with the representative from the National Overdose Awareness Committee, and we're, we're actually going to do a proclamation in recognition, and I think National Awareness Day is the 31st of, of August, so you'll be hearing more about that. That's probably enough for now. Thank you, everybody. Does anybody else have anything else you want to add? Okay, it might be a new record. 7:45, meeting adjourned.